You ready? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 30th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We were here at 6:00 and went into executive session, as it says on the agenda, for the reasons stated. Let's have another roll call, please.
All five, selectmen, the president, as well as town council.
All right, can we have a pledge of allegiance? How about Kim?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, next is announcements. Alan.
Okay, gonna be a long one today, sorry. First off, Verallife. I've been getting, on a constant daily basis, people complaining about how the town is especially treating Verallife, et cetera. So I'm gonna take just a couple of minutes and explain what really goes on in life. At the beginning, when the state of Massachusetts basically voted for marijuana, they had medical, they had retail, et cetera. The initial medical was done by the Department of Public Health. And at the time, we had a moratorium. At the end of the moratorium, we passed zoning regulations which allowed for medical to be strictly in what we call the institutional, which is by the hospital in particular. We had retail locations specified. Problem is that the state kinda did a 180 on us after the fact and decided that medical marijuana facilities could also have retail facilities. And the bottom line was that we had no knowledge of that ahead of time. Therefore, with our zoning, et cetera, and retail also could be institutional, they were allowed by law to do both. And they had priority because the state decided medical had first shot. So when people sit there and say that we allowed this to happen without any consideration of parking, we didn't have any choice. It was beyond our control. And if anybody looks at the history, Northampton and Lester, who came before us on the retail, were virtually inundated with traffic, which shut their towns down. And we were very fortunate that John Walczek, police chief, physically went out there, sat with these people to figure out what was happening, what to do before we opened. And John was able to put a program in place that did not basically destroy downtown Wareham for traffic flow, et cetera. It actually worked out pretty well, where the shuttles were back and forth. There wasn't any loitering or anything else. And currently, right now, the way it is, the Verallife is allowed to have anybody park anywhere in public parking, because that's the way the law is. The signs are down, the people complained about. I watched very carefully this past week. I noticed that on Saturday, which I thought would be a tough day, that there was really no traffic jams. People were walking, got back and forth. You could tell if they came from the marijuana shop, because they'd be carrying this little black bag with them, which had their product in it. And some of the merchants said they actually saw a little uptick in business. So it's working pretty well. It looks as if, you know, unless we have a major event like the Oyster Festival, we're probably not gonna have any problems. And I will also make very clear, it really bothered me when people would insist that we're giving special treatment, et cetera. We do not, at the expense of the town, Verallife paid from day one for the police details, for their own security, for everything, signs. There was never any money spent by the town of Wareham that wasn't reimbursed completely. So I want everybody to understand that we went to, we did what we had to do by law, and we did it correctly, and the Verallife stepped up and paid for it. We even tried to work out a parking arrangement with the Bessie Prop, next door to the Bessie Prop, which is the Baker property. And we did get it cleaned up, which is another fringe benefit of what happened. And next on my list is, I'd like to thank everybody who worked on Don't Trash Wareham. This is, I think, our fifth year. They didn't get run over this year, which wasn't bad. And I'm amazed at how much got cleaned up, and the town's the cleanest I've seen in years. And thanks, just wanna thank everybody for the hard work, including one, a couple of our selectmen that helped out as well. Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah. Got a number of committees that need some people. So please apply Affordable Housing Trust, Beach and Tourism Cemetery, Chatter Review, CONCOM Conservation Commission, Consulon Aging, Finance Committee, Historic District Committee, Historical Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Minor Forest Planning Board Associate, Recycling Committee, and Wareham Cultural Council. Be nice to get these boards filled up, associates or whatever. If I'm incorrect on any of these, please let me know. I saw a couple that were on here that are full now. I pulled this off the webpage today, so. So, you know, take a look at it. Put your applications in. And you can get those as selectmen's officer online. Also, seasonal shell fishing bed closures. So any shell fisher people out there should go online and see what's closed and open. And there's also conditionally approved opening for rainfall sites, so check your guidelines. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, I just wanna add to what Alan said. I've stopped and talked to the detail officers two or three times over the past, what is it, a week and a half now? Who are crossing people across Sandwich Road to get to the Verallife shop. And they've said that there have been no problems whatsoever with parking. I was even told by Sergeant Noble today that Verallife is looking to move their employee parking to a private lot just off of Main Street to create even more space behind Merchant's Way. Right now, they're parking along Merchant's Way near the sewer pump station, so they're actually gonna be moving in and creating even more parking spots. Apparently, Verallife, on a slow day, is doing about 400 people a day, on an average day, about 500 during the week, more on the weekends. And so far, there haven't been any problems down there. The most you see is maybe four, five, six people at a time walking to and fro. Of course, they're not down there for the 6:00 rush, so maybe that's when everybody descends on the place, when they get out of work. But it does seem to be operating fairly smoothly, and I would like to thank Alan for getting involved in this, as well as the Director of Planning, Ken Buckland, and also the police, all of the police department. Because they've really made this a pretty smooth transition for something that had us all kind of wondering how the heck it was gonna be when we were looking at it first back in November. Secondly, I'd like to thank everybody who showed up at town meeting. Regret will be by the second night, that wasn't very many of you, but for the people who did show up, thank you very much. I know one or two of my attempts at humor fell flat, and we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, real flat. Very good.
Go ahead, you've got one night to rub it in.
We just have one here. This is from Nora Bickie, the amazing leader of Don't Trash Wareham. Don't Trash Wareham would like to thank the more than 400 volunteers who participated in the fifth annual cleanup this past weekend because of their hard work. Our streets, parks, playgrounds, and beaches are clean throughout Wareham and onset. We suggest you visit our Facebook page to see photos of some of our volunteers and the amount of trash collected. We would also like to thank our current administration and their support, as well as Gary Buckminster from the Department of Natural Resources, and Dave Menard from Municipal Maintenance for their continued help each year. Finally, we would like to thank Covanta Seemask for their use of the dumpsters, and Lowe's Home Improvement for supplies, which are distributed to our youth groups and nonprofits.
That's it? All right, so I just wanna say a couple things. One, you know, I, like everybody, I have a Facebook page. And for the last two, probably almost three years now, I haven't even looked at it. And recently, I kinda went back and I looked at it a little bit. And not happy with what I saw. There's a lot of people out there that are degrading our town and saying things are bad, and it's not run well, and it's this, that, and the other thing. And that's the reason why, by the way, I'm not gonna go on it again after this, after I finish with this. But I hear everybody complain about everything you can imagine. I mean, I was looking at this stuff, and there's lists of people complaining, complaining, complaining. You know, one thing I didn't see was one solution. Not one person said, you know, that this is wrong, and they should do this. Not one. And so I kinda got in a little tate-a-tate with somebody, and I said, "Listen, I'm not gonna listen to you cry and moan and groan anymore." Right? If you come up with a solution, let me know, I'll listen to that. So I just want everybody to realize that, you know, Wareham's a pretty darn good town. And I'll put it up against any town around here. And it's time we stop degrading our own town. It's been a terrible thing. I hear it all the time. And it's, you know, "Oh, it's Wareham. Oh, it's this. Oh, it's that." And I'm so tired of it. I really am, I'm tired of it. Get in behind your town. If you think something's wrong with it, do something to fix it. Tell somebody. Give them an idea of how to fix it. You know, this is just silliness. And it's gotta stop, anyway. All right, so that's it, and my Facebook days are over. The other thing was, you know, the other thing that did happen, that I'm gonna complain about, was everybody was out there working hard picking up trash. And it was so interesting, because I was going down this road, and I had gone down once because my son's playing basketball, and I had to go down to go take him to his basketball game. So I went down the road, and I see them all out there, and they're working hard and picking up stuff. And then I had to come back later on. And when I came back later on, there was already cups and stuff on the ground, like thrown out of trash, thrown out people. This is another part of taking care of your community. Don't throw stuff on it. You don't think enough of it, apparently, that you throw stuff out your window or your car. This is a good community with good people. Let's take care of it. Let's take care of ourselves. Let's help each other. Let's figure out what the problems are and fix it if you all think we have problems. Let's listen to it. Anyway, I had enough of that, I guess. I got one other thing, but I'll save it for later. Let's move on. Next, citizens.
You're on a roll.
Citizens, citizens' comments. Come on down. Did Sandy raise her hand? Oh, good. I can hardly wait for that one. You don't have any trash with you, do you?
Oh, she might. I was gonna turn and look, and then I thought, "No, I'll just go first."
Madam Moderator, welcome.
Thank you. I'm just here tonight just to let you know that selectmen Slaven, our town clerk, Michelle Bissonette, and I took a ride to Linfield last night to their annual town meeting to observe electronic voting. They had one article, when we pulled into town, there were signs all over town, "Vote Yes," "Vote No," "Neighbors Against Neighbors." And we thought, "Oh, this is really gonna be a good meeting to attend." They were expecting 1,000 people, 1,000 voters. They ended up with 485, because the controversial article ended up being pulled. It was a zoning article. But it was very interesting. It was the moderator's first night. He did a very good job. But as far as the electronic voting went, I think we saw a couple of little things. Initially, they only started out with 10 seconds to vote, and then they were finding, because they had two rooms, they had an overflow room. I think there was a little discord, disconnect between the moderator and the other room, because he would announce the vote, but it wasn't time yet to vote, so people in the other room were voting. So they had a little bit of difficulty with the handhelds. But it was attended to very quickly, and I think that surprised Alan and I, how quickly that they did attend to it. And what they ended up doing was testing all the remotes. They just stopped everything, they tested the remotes. There were maybe two people that were on a different channel, Alan, different frequency, that they had to...
There was more than a few. The problem is that the little, it's a real small little piece you have, and it has buttons on it, and it has, like, basically frequencies. You can be on a couple of different frequencies. What happens is, I'll do it real quickly, is that if on one frequency, it will light up red, yellow, or be green. It was supposed to be green, and some of the people were complaining, they didn't think the voting, it was red. So what it is, is we all have a tendency to play with buttons. They were playing with buttons. So they fixed it, and they fixed it within seven, eight minutes.
Was this their first time using it?
No.
Yeah.
They've used it before, but the bottom line was that normally when something like this happens, people get cranky and everything else, and usually have a lot of noise and everything. There wasn't a sound, there was like nothing, they just went in. There was one woman, basically, from Turning Point, the company that ran the program on the rental, and she just got up, went around, and it was, I mean, I was very unusual to see something like that go so cleanly with no problems at all.
And they ended up changing the timeframe to 20 seconds, which worked out a lot better, you know, especially with the overflow room, because then there was communication back and forth. But we found it very interesting, and instantaneously, the numbers came up on the board. You knew immediately how many voted in the affirmative, how many voted in the negative. The moderator would announce the vote. There was no question on a two-thirds or four-fifths, it was right there. So we were, we were pretty impressed with it. So we're looking forward to a trial run in the fall. I think our ointment in the fly is going to be, we have to have all our ducks in a row two weeks before town meeting, because we have to get the information to them so that they can set up their computer. So I think maybe after the end of this month, the beginning of the month, we're gonna have to sit down and do a timeframe, let department heads know that they need to get their information in. The motions have to be done. So we have a little work to do, but I think you're gonna find it interesting, and I really am looking forward to at least giving it a try and seeing what the people think about it.
Yeah, why not? Do we, does, when you push the button, it locks it out after that?
Yeah, you only vote once.
So it kinda, so that controller can only give one vote, and that's it, right?
Right. Well, you actually can vote, well, some systems actually, you can change your mind within that 20 seconds. So if you decide you wanna change your vote...
But it only accepts one vote on that particular thing, right? So you can only put one number up. So that's good, that works out good. All right, so we'll have to work a little harder on getting stuff done.
Yeah, so just so you have advanced warning that...
All right, then, that's good.
We gotta work a little harder, because we need two weeks before town meeting to get it done. But it was pretty interesting, and, you know, to see another town, obviously, every town does things differently, and it was pretty interesting to go somewhere else and watch someone else work.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
And we didn't agree with the lawyer either.
No.
Town council didn't work well for us.
Yeah, I think I'll, I've talked to our council, I did look it up today, and I think we were right, and...
He was wrong.
He was, well, I won't say he was wrong. Attorneys are...
They're never wrong.
They, they have a right to opine.
He was just on a different frequency.
He was.
The only thing two lawyers agree on is that they're proposing.
Yeah.
I wasn't gonna say that.
It's true, though.
But I did come home and come back and look it up, and I said, "Yes, we were right."
All right.
It's for mine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Come on down. I don't think you even have to give us your name anymore, you know?
Somebody out there who doesn't know me.
Yeah, the minister will just reflect.
I don't know who that is.
She came up and said...
Yeah.
Good evening, Sandy Slaven. Two things. For those that don't remember, tomorrow's Tax Day. Taxes are due tomorrow, so just, just put it out there to say, "If not, you start paying interest." On two, the CPA grants for the fall town meeting are due the second Tuesday in June. So if anybody's planning to put any articles in for town property, you need the approval of the selectmen and FinCom to even submit the grant to CPC. But we accept in the second week in June in order to make our delivery for our articles in, I believe they'll probably be due in, what, first week of August, second week of August? They're early.
No, I don't think it's towards the end of August, but...
We normally have less than four meetings in order to get everything in ready to be submitted for an article. But a reminder that I know that there, the rumor is, we have a lot coming up for town-owned property. And for those that are submitting them for the town, you need selectmen's approval to submit it, and you need FinCom to submit it to CPC. So second Tuesday in June is your deadline for fall town meeting. Thank you.
We'll let the town administrator know. Thank you.
All right, next up, board's comments. Alan.
We're gonna roll today. Well, we have, hopefully it'll be good news. A little over two years ago, town meeting approved what we call energy aggregation, which basically allowed the town, working with a company called Good Energy, to go out with other cities and towns in the area and bid for electricity as a group, which gives us more leverage and lower rates. At that time, the savings was gonna be between $150 to $250 a year per resident. This particular program takes every resident in the town of Wareham, and every businesses basically automatically goes in. And what happens is, you have the right to opt out immediately if you don't wanna be in the program. Unfortunately, when we first did it, we had to wait for town meeting for approval, and we missed the first go-around. It's taken us almost two years to get back in the queue again to go in for the bid process. We basically, we were announced about a week and a half ago. John O'Rourke, which is the executive at Good Energy, sent us a note that we finally made it into the group, which is, we're part of the original group as well. And I think I got a note from Derek this morning that they've made me the go-between person to work between Good Energy and the state to make sure that we stay in the queue. So if this goes south, I'll be getting a lot of emails and bad publicity, but the bottom line is, I'm hopefully, this will work out for everybody. And I do apologize for taking two years, but it was completely without, outside our control to make it work. But it is here, finally. Just to follow up with Claire, as I said, we went yesterday, Claire and I both have taken different tacks to talk about electronic voting. We both have the same end goal, and we've been working at it from different ways. We had a meeting back probably, oh, I'm gonna say, four months ago, with Jimmy Potter, came in, who originally set up the parking and hotel, motel tax program as far as community events committee, which funds different events in the town. And we asked Jimmy what was the goal of that particular committee, what they were looking at, what areas. And at his discussion, he talked about they were also looking to spend money to town meeting to make it more efficient and make things work better. So I'm a little slow at times, but the light bulb went off, and said, "This may be a way that we can fund our electronic voting and not have to worry about having a budget in the town as a live item, et cetera, to make this thing work and be sustainable." Community Events Committee actually voted about a month ago to go ahead and do this. We expected to pay for this first attempt in the fall. We were very surprised that Turning Point, out of their goodness of their heart or something, hopefully business, I guess, decided to give us one shot free completely. So I'm looking at this not just for the fall, but we're looking at this as a permanent piece, because we can fund it easily on a rental basis, which is the best way to go. So just want everybody to understand that this is coming, and it should be, it'll be interesting to see. It really worked well, you know, and I was really, again, I was really surprised at the diversity of the people at the meeting, and they had no issues at all. So thank you.
Jim?
I just wanna say, I'm wearing the robes, and they've been very helpful, and I wanna thank them. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Peter?
Yeah, this is more of, I guess, more liaison, but I'll just say it now and get it over with. The Redevelopment Authority is still looking at June 1st, 10:00 on a Saturday, to host a workshop meeting to go over the redevelopment strategy that's been prepared for us by our consultant. But we're also looking possibly to do a night presentation in the same manner, because we understand sometimes people can't get to things on Saturdays. So we're looking for either the Thursday before or the Thursday after June 1st, depending on when the school committee is not meeting. So whatever, whatever date that they're not meeting is when we would likely do that. So there will be more information about the time and the place as we get closer to it, but that's, as I announced, a town meeting, that's still the plan, is to get this information out to people and get your feedback. A lot of work and a lot of effort went into this, and we wanna hear what people think about it.
Mary?
I have nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything either. Next up, appointments, please.
Okay, we have a bunch of appointments. First one up, Sandy Slaven. Sandy, you wanna say anything? You wanna...
Reappointment.
It's a reappointment, so...
A reappointment.
Okay, so I move that we reappoint Sandy Slaven to the Open Space Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. One abstain. Sorry, 4-0-1.
Okay, next one is Brian Litchfield. Brian is also a reappointment. So I move that we appoint Brian Litchfield to the Open Space Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
Okay, next up, Kimberly Shaver-Hood for Community Preservation Committee.
Those are, we have, these two are here for...
Interviews.
Interviews.
Okay.
Kim and Joanne, Joan.
Joan, okay.
So we do the Board of Health. I did get, I did get, the Board of Health did call me and told me that they authorized this, these reappointments.
They recommended them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you want me to skip to that?
Yeah.
Board of Health, okay.
Yeah, do them.
Okay.
We'll get to them, they're gonna be in interviews.
Okay. So I, this is Catherine Finney for the Board of Health. So I move that we appoint Catherine Finney to the Board of Health for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
Okay, also on the Board of Health, Tom Gleason. So I move that we reappoint Tom Gleason to a, to the Board of Health.
It's an associate's position, right? Is he a regular member?
As an associate member.
Associate member.
Yep, you're right. Term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
All right, you wanna do all the constables? Quick?
Now, before we do the constables, I did ask, we always do queries on these things, as everybody knows, and we do them after we approve them. But besides that, I did ask the chief to weigh in on these, and I got a thing today that says, "Please be advised that I've reviewed the list of individuals applying for reappointment with the position of constable of the town of Wareham. At this particular time, I see nothing that would preclude anyone from serving in this position." All right, so the only one thing that we had is this one gentleman on here by the name of George Morse. We had a complaint filed against him at one point. I would like that to be added to his file, so that if there's any other complaints, that we would then take on an investigation. So I would like you to, when you do his, to add the complaint to his file, please.
Can we just do all of them as presented with the proviso that his has the...
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mary, you'd make the motion, all, as all, as presented, with the complaint going into Mr. Morse's file.
Okay, do you want me to name them individually?
Nope, you can just say "as presented." It's in the...
Okay, I move that we accept all of the constables. They're all...
One-year term.
One-year, so June, not to expire later than June 30th, 2020, with the exception of George Morse. We do need to have a notation in his chart.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Okay.
Go to the interviews.
Nope, so now we can go to the interviews.
Okay.
Great. So why don't we have Kim Shaver-Hood come down, please? These are community preservations, because there's only one seat available, and we have two.
Hello.
Hello. How are you? I think we know who you are, but you might as well tell people who you are.
Kim Shaver-Hood.
Okay. All right, so does any, does, anything you wanna tell us first before we?
That I would just like to, I've been in the community now six years, and I think it's giving back, and this would be another way I could give back to the community.
Okay, awesome. All right, does anybody have any questions, Ms. Shaver-Hood? Anyone?
I don't.
No, no questions?
No.
We know you pretty well.
Okay, that was easy.
Thank you.
That was an easy interview.
That was, thank you.
Could be the easiest interview I've ever seen. All right, is Joan Kinnenberg down, please? Come on down.
We gonna do this, just the same thing?
Yeah.
Easy interview.
Interview, hopefully yours will go well, too. All right, so you wanna tell us anything while you're here?
Yeah, I'm Joan Kinnenberg. I've lived in the community for 22 years, and I have the time now to be able to invest in the community and give back, and I'm really interested in helping to drive product, projects that will add value to Wareham. So I think the Community Preservation Committee with my business skill sets would be a good fit.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Do you know what the Community Preservation Committee actually does?
I do. I do know. They work, they maintain and update the community preservation plan. They review and recommend projects to the Board of Selectmen to go on the agenda for approval by the committee. And they maintain records and budgets to be able to fund and track projects.
Great, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, I've gotta ask a question.
Sure.
We got no recommendation at all from CPC, right?
That is correct, it was a, we could not decide, we had a tie.
So it was a tie, okay. That's, that's all I wanted to know, if you had a preference or not, so. Okay, anybody else have questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now I need a motion. Who's making the motion?
Tough choice. I suppose we could flip a coin, too, but I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Joan Kinnenberg to a term on the Community Preservation Committee. Do we have the paperwork there for, that tells us what the term is?
No later than June 30th, 2022.
Okay, so moved.
All right, I have a motion by Peter. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Peter, second Jim. Any discussion?
I just wanna say I found both of them very acceptable.
Yeah.
And the application of Joan's was thorough, and I appreciate them both putting in for the position.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 5-0-0.
And don't worry, Madam Superintendent, we'll find something for you.
Have no fear.
Fresh meat, fresh meat. Thank you both for your interest.
All right, next is an application from Louis Contreras, 207 Main Street, Wareham, for a one-day liquor license and use of town roads on May 4th, 2019. Rain date of May 5th, 2019.
Cinco de Mayo.
Yes.
And if you want.
Come on down. And he's the gentleman who runs the?
El Mariachi.
Mariachi, right? Who are you?
Patrick.
Hello, Louis.
I'm glad you got it in this year.
All right, so, just so you know, I just wanna make a couple things clear quickly, is that you have to keep everything separate, right? You know that. It can't be mixed with your alcohol from inside, your alcohol has to be separate, and, because it's a conflict for you to do it any other way, okay?
No, we, I had a detail for that.
Well, that's okay, but I'm talking about you, you have to buy alcohol separate for the, for the event, you can't buy it with the alcohol that you buy for your other event, okay?
For your business.
For your business, your business and that cannot mix at all.
Oh, no, 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 we're gonna have a, like, a bar, just a provisional bar.
Right, but you can't call up and say, "This is Mariachi, and I wanna add this to my account." You have to say, "Okay, we're buying this for the one-day alcohol license," and you have to keep everything separate.
Okay.
Okay? If you don't, you get yourself in hot water.
With the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission.
Exactly, and I don't want you to get in.
Because you're essentially gonna be trying to operate under two different licenses on the same day.
Rich wants to add a little something for you.
Thank you.
To protect you.
Yeah, no, thank you, guys.
Who are your wholesalers?
I got Horizon, Martinelli, United, Ellen Knife, and Colonial.
All right, well, what you ought to do is open up a separate account with each of your wholesalers for the alcohol that you're gonna use.
You can do that, definitely, yeah.
So just so you've got a good paper trail, that if you're, if the ABCC does an audit, you can say, "Here's the separate account, it was all separate, we stored the materials in a separate spot." That will protect you.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
You see, a lot of people don't realize that, and that gets them sort of?
Yeah, I didn't know that, thank you.
Because you already have a license.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a very kinda gray area, okay?
All right.
So, you know, and we want you to be able to do this, 'cause we want you to be able to Cinco de Mayo. All right, so, and, well, don't Cinco de?
License, yeah, exactly.
All right, so any other questions of the board?
Well, I'm glad to see this has finally happened.
How are you doing?
Jim?
I think there's a, there's a list of conditions that would be attached to the approval of this, if I'm correct, as far as detail and outside toilets and other things.
No, 'cause he can use his inside toilet.
I also rent portable ones.
Those are conditions that were set in a fire department and other things. I don't know if you saw those, I'd inquired about it.
I haven't seen it, 'cause there's, is the conditions in the file? Let me see the?
No, they weren't in the file, is why I asked.
That's the only thing that I see right there.
And Janet, Janet had gotten back to me, I figured she'd put it in there. She sent you a copy to Patrick.
Yeah, well, he says fire department.
The Board of Health signed off on it, they would be responsible for toilets. And one, it says four regular and one handicap, yeah, portable toilets are required.
Yeah.
So you're right, it's here.
Yeah, police detail.
All right, let me see what else he's got.
Two offices, I think.
Must apply online for the tent permit. So you gotta apply for the tent permit through the inspectional department, okay? That's $53. There is no retainer fee, fee imposed, let's see. This one here is Wareham Fire Department. Fire Department needs, no, there's nothing from the Fire Department. So your Fire Department's all set there, let's see what else. Emergency Medical Services, nothing. Nothing from the Police Department. It says, "This event will grant stipulations that the organizer place appropriate barricades to ensure that the vehicle traffic cannot easily access the site area."
Didn't say, yeah.
Other than that, it doesn't say anything about a police detail. Here's its approval right here.
Hmm, okay.
All right, so those are the stipulations. What I'll do is, when you go to pick this up, I'll make sure they have the list of stipulations for you, okay?
Thank you.
So that you can follow them accurately and not get in any issues. All right? Okay, any other discussion? All right, what?
Motion?
Yeah, do.
I move that we approve the one-day liquor license for El Mariachi, Luis Contreras, 207 Main Street, for Cinco de Mayo, Saturday, May 14th, 2019. Rain date, Sunday, May 5th, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., with the conditions that are already stipulated here.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. So what'll happen is, you'll have to go to, go to our office, and they'll give you that, and they'll give you the list of stipulations so that you know exactly.
I'll be here tomorrow.
And heed counsel's warning, okay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Louis.
All right, next up would be the second-hand dealer licenses. You can just say as written, when you do them, you know what I mean? Do them all at once.
Two of these. I'm sorry, what were you?
Second-hand dealers?
Yep. Okay, so what are we doing with these?
You can just do them all at once.
We have second-hand dealers license from Gateway, Golden Pond Inc., Cranberry Flea Market.
This is the wrong one.
Sorry, these are out of order.
We didn't appoint Kim, we gotta tail this up.
Yeah, sorry, I kept that one to the side. GameStop.
It'd be behind it. No, it isn't, okay.
Cranberry Flea Market, I already said that. Wellesley United Methodist Church.
All right, yeah, just tail that one.
Aaron Marks Inc., DBA, AJ Marks Jewelers, and Not Your Average Antiques. So I make a motion that we issue these licenses.
Okay. Second motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. Okay. Next up is the discussion of projects with the Board of Selectmen for the upcoming year. Now, I don't expect everybody will have everything they wanna do, but has anybody come up with any list of projects that they, they would like to proceed with this year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, how about Peter?
I'm gonna stick with the Redevelopment Authority and the various things out of Tremont Nail, I think that's enough.
Okay, so Tremont Nail, it would be nice if you could get me some specifics about what you wanna do out there, okay? So that I can put it in your?
Yeah.
Little thing. Alan?
Okay. First off is the Energy Aggregation Project.
Okay.
Ongoing now.
Yeah.
Next is the Bike Path for Narrows in Mayanid Ave to Depot, which is also going to give us a rotary at the end of that road.
Well, that's a good thing, because we, we have no Bike Path Committee, as you know, right now, so somebody's gotta take that, so that's awesome.
Basically, Ken Buckland and I have the Bike Path.
Yeah.
Route 620 East Wareham Roadwork Project, can follow that through as well.
Okay.
Route 6 redo Fair Haven to Town Hall Wareham, four lanes to two lanes with a third turning lane.
Okay.
Project is, I've started it, and we're moving through with that one as well.
Okay.
Next one, of course, is one of the big ones, commuter rail for Wareham Downtown Development. The commuter rail, I'll speak about it during the next piece here. Plastic bag miniatures resolution by state laws, I've been working at that at the state level, 'cause if we were to do something locally, it doesn't matter, because if every town around us has nothing, nothing happens, really.
Yeah, and they actually have the second, as I understand it, there's a couple of proposals right now that are being discussed, that one of them's probably gonna get approved.
Yeah, I think we're gonna see it this year.
So it's probably gonna happen.
The new police station, which I've been pushing for, and, you know, stuff, we've got the capital plan now with the marijuana money to fund, so that's gonna be coming through, depending where we decide for location.
Okay.
And the last is the assist on the continuing development of the Baker property on Lower Main Street. That'll keep me busy for a few weeks.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, by the way, is, as we're discussing this, is she's gonna take it and type it up into a little thing, and that'll be kinda your, your stuff, okay? As we do it, and we'll kinda refine it a little bit, and then we'll just see how we're doing down the road.
Yeah.
How we, how we're doing and where we got to.
Check up every month or so.
Jim, you're up next.
Okay.
What would you like to work on?
Well, we'll see what committees we get appointed to, I put a list into you. Affordable housing would be one of them, I think that needs a kickstart. Transfer station, possibly Selectmen representative on that. I think the?
Well, that's gonna be a big one, so I think, I think that's a good one, I for you.
And I think the other towns all have a select person on the board, so it would be good. It's gonna end in a contract with the, Covanta ends in a year. In addition, they're gonna be closing the landfill in a couple of years, unless they get an extension by some miracle. So there's gonna be a lot going on there, and I think it's a good benefit that we here in the town have, is an option for trash disposal, keep it affordable for people. Maybe come up with some ideas in that related to mattresses and whatnot, because in large bulky items, maybe we can get it done at a cheaper rate, maybe not, but look into that. Also, policy reviews and town policies, a lot of redundancy, a lot of them are old, maybe take a look at that and discuss it with the board and reorganize that or not. And work on website postings of positions and openings with different people in the town, you know, it's kinda a circular thing, finding out who does what and responsibility. Having someone responsible for something is very helpful in getting it done and not just running around in circles, so. For right now, that would be it.
Okay. Mary, any ideas?
Oh, I'm, I'm not taking on anything new right now, I'm gonna stick with my trash and flowers.
Trash and flowers?
Trash and flowers, I'll just be planting plants and picking up trash.
Trash and flowers?
It's my deal.
All right. All right, so, you know, we'll refine this as we go along, we'll get everybody on board with something. I have a bunch of things that I wanna see happen this year, and I really don't wanna, at this particular second, we don't, we're not privy to that stuff yet, but you will be shortly, and then I'll be telling you what I'm taking on if you give me another week or so, okay? Just so you know, and I do, I have quite a few things in there, some of them are relatively exciting, so, should be good.
You can always do what I did.
What?
When I was chairman, I said, "You guys are my project."
Yeah, well, we could do that, but that wouldn't be fair.
How did that turn out? How did that turn out, they asked?
That wouldn't be fair. All right, so next up is any of the town business not reasonable? Oh, you know what? One other thing, I forgot to make an announcement before we do that. So this is an announcement, and I wish the press would get this, too. I forgot to do this earlier. Wareham is acting, asking people to remove personal objects from the town cemeteries by Friday, May 3rd, ahead of the spring cleanup. According to the town cemetery rules and regulations, management can remove any item deemed offensive, improper, or detrimental to the general appearance and safety of the cemetery, including borders, wind chimes, large hooks, decorative flags hung on metal support frames, glass items, and stones. Live flammable candles, planting beds at flush markers to use of fencing and edging around planting beds, use of artificial turf, planting of trees, shrubberies, vine, rose, roses, bushes, and alike. Placement of items or plantings taller than the monument are not permitted. All items not removed by the owners will be disposed of during the town's landscape operation. Now, just so you know, Town Meeting voted some new regulations into the cemetery regulations. This is incorporating what Town Meeting has asked for, so they're going to start enforcing those rules in the cemetery. So I don't want everybody to freak out, I know they will, because a lot of people have a lot of closeness in the cemetery and totally understand it. But in order to, to uphold what Town Meeting has requested, we're going to start enforcing those regulations. So please let everybody know out there, so that they get those things out of the way, especially if there's something that's there that they want to keep. It might be a keepsake or something that they put out there that's gonna get removed, and we don't wanna see them thrown away. Okay? All right, so now, any other town business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours? Peter?
None.
Alan?
No.
Jim?
No.
Mary?
No.
No, okay. Moving on, the Town Administrator's Report. Town Administrator had some illness in his family today, and he had to deal with that, so, just so you know, that's why he's not here this evening, and we'll get a report, I'm sure, next week. Next up would be liaison reports, and I'm gonna start with Peter this time.
You are.
I am.
I'll defer to the next person.
All right, then Alan, you're on a roll, buddy, let's go for it.
Okay. We had a Serpents Commissioners meeting Wednesday of last week. I have been working on trying to get Gene Fox, who basically is the project manager for South Coast Rail, which is on its 35th or 36th birthday right now, as far as starting and not going anywhere. And we actually, Gene was, was supposed to come, and then at the last minute wanted to cancel, but we did get two of the key people from South Coast Rail to come and visit with us. And about a day and a half before the actual meeting, the governor and Lieutenant Governor announced South Coast Rail Phase 1 project, and they have fully funded the project through the CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Program, which means all the funding is in place to do the Phase 1 for commuter rail, and also part of the Phase 2, which is the commuter rail that will go up to Stoughton. So, and also EPA has signed off on everything, so there are no impediments as far as anything to do with commuter rail going forward. They made finally the actual commitment, I've got basically information here showing about proposed service, three trains coming out into Bedford, three trains coming out of Fall River going up to a new station in Middleborough, and then from there, the Middleborough Station's going to be a, what they call a central aisle station, where basically you have the station in the middle and a track on each side, so the trains can come up and go through it. Yep, same thing coming back at night. They're projecting ridership of around 22 to 2300 people, parking spaces for about 1,900. The cost for this project is $1 billion and $47 million. This is a small piece of change, I guess.
That's it?
It's only money.
The test runs will be at the end of 2022, and the trains will be operating 23 and probably later in September of 2023, the full service will be in effect.
Let's just get it to Alan. This is, okay.
They've already committed to buying $10 million worth of special track work, so basically what it is, is a continuous track, which is all welded together for the areas they need it. They hired for culvert work, for bridge work, future construction, have pictures of the new train stations in Taunton, Free Town, etc. So, this project is really ramped up and pushed ahead quite frequently. Our piece, of course, is the spur, which I call from basically Lakeville down to Buzzes Bay, which is known as the Cape Flyer, which goes all the way to Boston. This is the first time in the three years I've been dealing with this, that our particular piece was included into the special, thought as a maybe or whatever, so they're looking at actually doing something with us to weigh the train to Middleborough. I'm going to make an assumption, which is a bad word to use, that our piece goes up, and when it isn't to Middleborough, it's going to change over with.
Yeah.
So, it's been a long time coming. The other big pieces, they have what they call DTLA, which is basically technical assistance. We have a train station downtown Wareham. That train station qualifies us for what they call technical assistance. Peter, with the Redevelopment Authority meter, and Mary, have the ability now to get a hold of the railroad and the programs, and look for money for, do redevelopment downtown along the tracks.
Yeah.
Which means that we could have funding available to take Main Street on the water side and do a 180, so actually the business can face the water and actually do some serious redevelopment. So, I've asked Ken Buckland to actually already start to look into contacting the state to find out how we get on the list of grants and programs, because they basically, anywhere there is a station, it's called basically, the word is TOD, T-O-D, it's a transit-oriented development, and there's funding available for anything to do with a mixed use like that.
Yeah.
So, we can really open up and actually, we can revitalize downtown Wareham. We have an opportunity, and I don't want to see us lose this one. Because this only comes around once in a lifetime.
Yeah, we'll be on it.
That's great.
And I'll pass this down, so you guys can have that, so you have information that's going on.
Put it in the file, yeah.
You'll make a copy for there, but it's been a while coming, and I just appreciate everybody's help in letting me get, play around with this.
All right, Jim, do you have anything?
I'm not on any committee, so I don't have any reports.
Yeah, you will be. You will be, pretty soon. And Mary, you have anything?
Nope.
I don't have anything. Okay, so I'm going to ask Janet, and I'm saying this for Janet, that she put on the final week, I want to have, I haven't got everybody's suggestions for their liaison assignments, so please get them to me this week, and I'll make sure it gets on next week, and we'll get appointed to the, get the liaison appointments done. Okay, so, because that way Jim can get his feet wet and get going, okay? I appreciate that. All right, next up is the consent agenda.
We have no bills, we just have minutes from April 16th, 2019, and we were all here.